Okay, this time I'd like to call the work session of July seventeenth to order. Roll call please.
Roll call, Gonzalez here, Brenneman.
Here.
Haley. Wakes.
Here.
Well, Vinnie Henry here.
Parker.
Here.
Show online.
He does not.
You have a forum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections?
This rose so moved.
Wait a second.
Okay, move to second. Roll call please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Wakes.
Hi.
Well, Vinnie Henry.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Board update, GM update. Does any board members have any updates?
I do not, Mr. President.
Okay. I might say I got a call from the mayor's office, one of the secretaries up there. He's going to be holding a forum on August the third at the community college. And he asked, said that he'd ask if I would be in attendance. It couldn't be in attendance. And they were going to send me some information on what it's about. So. I don't know what it's about, but it's nine o'clock on August the third at the community college, so.
And I would just request that if there are four or more board members in attendance from the BPU that you let Nick know so he can put a notice since it would then be also be a public meeting for the BPU.
You know, did they invite? Did any of the other board members get invited?
This is the first I've heard of meetings, so I have no idea.
Then how did you know that they should have noted five, four, if four were going to be there?
I said if four, if four of you, if four of you guys are going to be there.
They go two, three, five. Okay, anyway, so I don't know what it's.
Did you say it's a public forum?
It's a public forum.
So to the extent that it's noticed on August second, maybe some of us, I understand that it's noticed on August second.
It is.
I said to the extent they noticed on August second, the rest of us might have known as a result of that.
Since it's a public meeting, Nick, you might want to listen. So I just wanted to let everybody know that there's, if there is going to be a public meeting on August third, nine AM at the community college at the learning center.
This is just two days before the
primary.
Out against crime of at Kansas City, at Community College as well.
And the primary.
On the primary on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Tuesday.
Yeah. Our day.
Well, I noticed that he was doing, this probably neither here that one or there, just one of his open sessions in Argentine at the library. I can't remember when. But that's coming up too.
Yeah. I will say publicly that this is the second time I've heard of the mayor calling a meeting and and those attending the meeting not knowing what the meeting was about.
Well, yeah, again, it wasn't the mayor that I talked to. It was a secretary. And she said that the chief of staff would be getting Irene Candeia would be getting in contact with me with more information. So. I look forward to.
It'd be nice to be prepared a little bit if you knew what the agenda items were going to be.
The purpose of the meeting. That's all I had. Bill, did you have any?
Oh, mainly just a question and then a comment. So one question, I know the UG continues to work through their budget process. And I know, I think it was all reported. Yeah, I've seen it that they're like, there's like a seventeen million dollar gap. And certainly how they go about addressing that, I'm not certain. I know that kind of bracing myself to see if they reach out to be viewed for. And I know there's been some preliminary conversations dated sometime back. I look and things like that. So I do, I do plan on getting with the mayor, just so you guys know, to kind of see where we are, where they are. And then I'll, if that's going to impact anything over here at the utility. I don't have any answers. Don't have anything to report just yet, other than there. Going through that.
I did, I saw that, that they went to the neutral, right, revenue neutral budgets. That they were going to have a seventeen million dollar shortfall. So I just kind of figured, well, they won't be cutting the pilots.
Right. I, as you know, I made the presentation for the government and letting them know how much we'd already been, I've already been given and asking them to try to find a way to find an answer. And as you know, I am meeting with the state administrator initially was to let him know that that's what he would be facing. Not knowing that they would eventually vote revenue neutral, but I know that that was necessary in order for us to really deal with where we are financially. There's going to be some cuts, some serious cuts.
The other thing, Tom, at the last United Way meeting that I attended, Irene also talked to me after the meeting to say that, what's her name, Becky, check, administrator's assistant, administrator, assistant.
Becky. Batista.
Yes, the Becky Batista who worked for David Johnson. Who would be following up on a quarterly meeting between BPU and UCU. So I did, I did remind Irene this week that I have yet to receive anything from Becky. So if that's going to come, it'd be good for us to have some advance notice. And that we, and David and I can sit down and go back through prior agendas and then talk about. And I can at least take the temperature of the board to see what's, what else, what are you guys interested in in topics going forward?
Yeah, and so it's technically not a quarterly meeting at this point, right? It may be, might be an annual.
Well.
We haven't met since last, last year at this time.
Quarterly request and an annual meeting?
My request is get back to the quarterly meetings and that, and that was, you know, those serve the a purpose for all involved, okay? And it really gave us a forum for discussing things back and forth that mutually impacted both of us. So.
You know, it's usually projects where.
Right.
But I really think in my tenure, which is roses at once.
Well, and then, so to that point, I was, I said, every other mayor, county administration, I can count going backwards. This was a outstanding procedure that took place every quarter. And now all of a sudden we stop. With new mayor and new county administration and.
Are you, are you talking about the quarterly meeting where the president and the vice president and the general manager would meet with the mayor and a couple of his staff? Or we're talking about a quarterly meeting of the, of our board with the full commission?
No, the president, vice president, two at large commissioners, trying to at least get back to that level. I guess pulling all elected bodies together. That's not my role to try to do that.
I know, and I still haven't received a response from the mayor on the letter that I sent.
Okay.
Other than the fact that I've been invited to.
But if we do have a project, our staff does meet with.
Yes, they do, they do. And if you remember, Mary, these conversations were all kept at a super high level. And, and it really was a, as much as a staff conversation, it did allow the two board members and the two commissioners and the mayor who were all elected to at least have some, some dialogue.
Exactly.
On those meetings as well to, it kind of set some direction for where we're going and what we hope to accomplish.
So we have not met at all in your presidency and how many times Rose in yours?
How many last July, just the big joint one?
But no quarterly, just the you and Bill. Michael.
Come in.
I only remember one since the.
We did once?
Well, one since the current administration has been in place.
But last July, it was the full.
Yes.
That was everybody.
We didn't do the normal quarterly one.
Get one quarterly meeting. And you remember?
We did?
Yep.
I thought you had.
The mayor showed up late.
Ah, yes, we had one, Mary.
Yeah, I thought you had one. I had.
I mean, by late, you mean, I mean, it was like the meeting was almost over.
Yes.
Okay. No, I mean, and I'm not, but I do remember that one. So.
And I think that was happened in ours.
Right.
I was, as well.
Yeah. Well, that's all I have. Next topic is GM search update. I brought Becky here to steer this conversation with the board. Really, it's your conversation, but think what we hope to accomplish tonight is their understanding on how we can advance this topic beyond today and then our next. And is that the board wants to decide on tonight. So that gives us a direction to work towards. And hopefully we can pay them a bit for, oh, that's just our request. Becky, you have any comments you want to make?
Um, so, it's from here. Okay. So you all should have received a book with all of this. And then yesterday, you know, Monday, we emailed out the executive summary. So you should have all received a copy of that. And what we tried to do in the executive summary was include the in bold, the items that were included in the proposal in the RFP for what were the evaluation criteria that we would use. And so it's like cross-reference if the information was too, too big or too, too much to put just a cross-reference in the page number. So hopefully you all have had a chance to memorize the um, and if not, then I guess we probably want to have a discussion about what you all want to do with the proposals. I can tell you a little bit about how BPU typically handles RFP process. It's a little bit different because we're dealing with the board rather than our internal stakeholders. But typically what we do is pretty much what you've all received will distribute out the proposals to the stakeholders. And then we'll get everybody back together and go through what I think it's also included in the last page. Sorry, it's included in proposal evaluations section on page, someplace in here. Page four is what we would do. We identify the criteria that were specified in the RFP. And then we'll determine what percentage we believe and the importance of the criteria. So if pricing is the most important criteria, then obviously it would have a higher percentage than one of the other criteria that you all may decide are not as, is not as important. They're all important. That's the problem. But we do have to have some, some way to fairly evaluate the proposals. And then what I would like to see is we complete that today if possible. And then you guys give us the, the go ahead, the green light to, if you have a top firm that we can then enter into an agreement with, start the conversation with them. And my driving force is probably the timeline on this. I think most of the consultants said it was ninety to a hundred and twenty days for them to, to get a candidate identified and go, go through their process and then through our process. Obviously you would want to meet with the candidates, candidate or candidates at some point. And so knowing that Bill's leaving at the end of the year, you know, it's time is of the essence, I would say. So.
But they were all pretty much the same on that. And also pricing is on there. I don't want to skip ahead, but that seemed to be pretty similar to me as well.
I think there was one that came in around thirty-two thousand, but most, everybody else was eighty, ninety thousand dollars plus the cost of the consultants or the candidates' travel years.
Can I ask a question about that in particular, the pricing and that huge differential for the one? And I'm actually looking at you guys, if I may, just because I think you guys probably deal with executive search firms, maybe more so, and no offense, Maggie, but is, in your experience in dealing with executive search firms, are you getting what you pay for potentially? Like I, I don't want to fall for the thirty-two thousand thing because, oh, but look, that's cheap.
Typically, yes. Just like anything, you typically get what you pay for. However, I will say Baker Tilly is a nationally known firm. They do exclusive government sector work. And so that might be the reasoning behind that lower fee. So I wouldn't necessarily throw them out because they're an extremely low fee. Got some good, good choices here, but Baker Tilly is pretty well.
Thank you.
Was there anything hidden in there? Any, any expenses or costs?
The only thing that I would say is be aware of some of the firms, or at least one of them, had a cap, which is a good thing. Some of the others had a minimum and that's something you really need to be aware of because that could get much more expensive.
Right.
Notice one of the things that the, with Baker Tilly say that, you know, they don't cover is that candidate travel expense, but I can't imagine that closing much of the gap between a thirty-two thousand.
I don't think any of them.
Any of them, okay.
Most of them.
Okay.
Most of them did not include that and they would expect that that will be built direct to BPU when we record the travel and
Additional question I have, Angie, this one's going to you.
All right.
Okay, so several of the proposals that we got listed exceptions to the contract?
Yes.
Will the potential negotiation of exceptions to this contract add additional time to this process potentially?
If you authorize us to negotiate and try and get reasonable standard BPU terms and you have a second pitch that is waiting in the wings that will make it go that much faster.
I mean, there, there's at least one proposal here that has no exceptions listed.
Yes, no, that is quicker, right? Unless.
One was that, yeah.
I will see this had no exceptions. So I will say.
I don't think that colleague had any exceptions either.
Do they not?
What we see sometimes is that when they submit their proposal, they'll take these exceptions. And then if we say, well, we'd like to award to you, but we also would like to be, use BPU standard terms and conditions that sometimes we can get them to move on that.
And it does, and it, but it's, it varies. It varies and it helps if we, if you would allow staff some ability to try and negotiate and then move on to the next if we are not able to.
And I think like Robert Half, if I remember right, it was Robert Half, they took quite a few exceptions. But most of that was because when we our master service agreement, that our master staffing service agreement that we would use in this particular case is broad. So it covers both the temp staffing and the executive search type work. And so a lot of theirs was targeted at the temp staffing and not the executive search. They don't want that in the agreement, which we wouldn't have any problem removing that or, but they then did come back and say, if we were awarded this, we'd have no problem signing your agreement. So sometimes, as you know, legal does their work and then the ops or the business does their work and, and hopefully they can all get to the same, same place. So.
Thank you.
The firm that we used last time, MyCoff Prose, they're not listed. They, did they not, were they not approached? Or were they not?
They were, they were included, but they chose not to submit a proposal. And I believe they did call Bill and say that they're not planning, they had too much work at this, at this point in time. So they didn't feel like they could take on the additional work for this search.
The reason I ask you, because most of these are not specific to the utility industry as far as search goes. And where MyCoff Prose, they were specific to the utility industry and.
But there were two that I recalled that had hired people like a New Bonds for municipal.
One or two, one or two, had one or two.
Yeah, and a lot of like government as well.
Which is. That's true, yeah.
I agree.
Thank you.
Do we, are you guys at a point that we want to put the spreadsheet up and talk about the
There you go.
waitings or is there more discussion on the proposals?
I think we need to work, get going.
And I want to make sure these guys are comfortable who chose this process. So let's.
Are you ready? I don't think, were you lying? What are you showing?
You three were, you three were the ones who, you know, had consensus that this is the direction you wanted to go. We want to make sure that you guys are comfortable.
Yeah.
So here's the spreadsheet that we drafted. It can be edited. Rob's capable Excel skills here on display. So there are six criteria. And right now they're at seventeen percent equal across the six.
I, I think we can remove pricing out of the way. I think that was the thing that we considered when we thought about this process. Pricing would not be included.
So it doesn't matter to you that one submitted a thirty-two thousand dollar and the other one said eighty thousand? Okay. So then.
I think that that's, that the pricing is, is definitely needs, will be looked at. But again, they're all pretty, they're all pretty.
Except for that one.
Except for the one.
Yeah.
Well, there are two, the recruit marks was
Thirty-eight.
Some thirty-eight or something.
Thirty-eight, I think.
I'm, I'm probably going to regret asking this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. How did we account for the potential of spending, let's say ninety to a hundred thousand dollars this year in, when we did the budget process last year? How do we account for that? I mean, we certainly didn't.
Budget.
Yeah.
No.
I mean, was it listed?
No. And so I, I don't know how this works. I really don't.
My understanding is BPU has never set for the budget for this process, even when the board decided to go out and hire a search firm to replace Don Gray. BPU just paid that out of this, out of his budget and then we just moved things around to account for that. So I had to participate in a search, in a national search. BPU board decided that's what they wanted to do at the time and it was paid for that way.
Well, like, so we have individual departments, like what budget does that come out? I mean, I'm seriously, I just don't know.
Laurie, and then get that information back to the board. Here's what our suggestion is.
Thank you.
No, man, this is pocket.
He wishes. Did you get arranged?
So what I also would say is, is the, the weighting up there is so if like, Stevie, you mentioned, or, sorry. I think it was mentioned that pricing may not be, so you could drop pricing down if you didn't want it to be as high as some of the other factors. And that's what I, I'm trying to get you, you to see is how the spreadsheet works is that. So say pricing goes to fifteen percent, then you have two percent to put someplace else. You would rank, and usually we use a one to five OCMS. Maybe they're at eighty thousand, so they get a four. And then Polly higher is about the same, they get a four, but Baker Chili is, is the thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand one, so they get a five. So that's how.
So five is top.
Yeah, that's usually what we use.
I don't want to throw out pricing entirely, but I do think since six of the seven are very
Similar.
close, it's more of a tiebreaker. It's, you know, Baker Tilly is, is neck and neck with something else. And certainly that's a compelling factor to look at, but if you know, one is five thousand dollars cheaper than another, but I don't, I don't think that's going to be as big of a factor as some of the other things that we have up there.
What do you think is weighted more, Brett? In your, your just, in your opinion?
Yeah. I think that past experience and on similar work is one that's higher for me.
It's baked me too.
Because again, you know, the, the schedule is pretty similar across the board. So that's not you know, I don't think we have anyone telling us they're going to turn this around in six weeks. So kind of a moot point on that one.
Well, one was less than ninety days.
That's true. That's a little bit more aggressive than some of the, you know, up to a hundred and twenty days.
And the other one, one was sixty to ninety days.
I agree with the ability to supply the personnel to support and complete the scope of work, including the science staff. I like that.
Yeah, Stevie, I think I'm, I'm agreeing with you on that.
On the support, did you say support for scope of work? Is that what you said?
The left, the left.
That ability to support would be higher for me too.
Yeah, I had that in the middle of the road in my.
The next would be method, approach and methodology for me.
Well, could we just talk about Brett's past experience? For, is that important?
Yes, most definitely for me as well.
It is, he said it was not important.
Oh, no, no, that is, that is.
Maybe the top one for me.
That might be the top one for you. And you said very important too. Everybody feel that way?
Yeah.
Or something better?
I think for me, the top two are the past experience and the ability to supply personnel. Part of that though, is we have fairly similar proposals on pricing with one exception. We have a little bit of a range on the schedule, but nothing too crazy.
Right, I, that's what I.
On approach and methodology, I'll defer to staff on preferences there. I don't, I don't feel like I have a great ability to say, I like this methodology over another one. So I'm hesitant to elevate that personally. Not to say it's not a significant factor. I just, it doesn't pop out as much to me. That's not my.
Explain what that means, approach and methodology.
And on that point, I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, our HR folks can maybe speak to that a little bit. I mean, I'm with Brad. I'm certainly no expert in this, but you guys.
Can you, and I'll just go there with you, Rose.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So can you put that in a form of question?
Oh, on Jeopardy? Are you kidding?
What is, what do you mean by approach and methodology?
Snappy. The past experience or similar work and demonstrated success in recruiting highly qualified candidates for similar executive positions. Uh, no, I'm sorry. That's not true. I apologize. The approach and methodology. I guess is, do you all have a preferred approach and methodology to this type of exercise over another or others? You, seriously, did I get five hundred bucks or something?
Very still.
So I think what you're going to see is recruiting firms are going to have very similar approaches and methodologies. They've been through really, a couple of the key factors are their experience. So do they have experience dealing with these types of searches with government, with utilities, those kinds of things? That's going to be critical. Pricing is going to be important. Approach methodology, they're all going to be similar on. I think another factor to consider is well, it's not a huge expense. Are they aware of the environment in, in Kansas City? So, you know, if they're east coast, west coast, are they really going to value?
And Dennis, I got to tell you, that is something that really sticks out to me, right? Because you know, in, in my past, you know, time on this board, I have heard multiple times that we have difficulty recruiting people into this community and not Kansas City, into Kansas City, Kansas. And so. And not Kansas City, into Kansas City, Kansas. And so I, from my perspective, having somebody that understands this region and understands the uniqueness of Kansas, greater Kansas City, challenges on both sides of the state line. That is really important to me because they're going to sell them on our city. And somebody in California, New York and DC, like, in my opinion, they can't do it. They can't do it justice.
Well, I would just say from personal experience, when we were interviewing candidates, when Bill left the job, you could almost tell who didn't like the situation with the answers in the interview. I mean, I can tell two of the candidates I knew were not going to. If we'd had chosen them, we're not going to.
Well, and to be fair, at the time you guys were doing that, we did not have Patrick Holmes and Bobby Witt Jr. So I do think those were. And Tay, and Taylor Swift. I, I mean, you know, those were, and really, I'm joking, but really, I mean, those kinds of things have put a, a bigger spotlight, you know, on this region rather than it just being flyover country.
So is a local company going to understand that better than someone who's?
In my opinion, yes, but that's just my opinion.
I, I felt the same thing earlier when I was reading through this.
If there are places you feel like that would be captured under those categories? Like if we are saying, and, and all that makes sense to me, that that is an important factor to consider.
My opinion is that, that BPU had the culture of its own. That's beyond anything. I think it'd fall, probably fall closest under the past experience on similar work, demonstrated success and similar, similar executives.
In the form of a question, have any of them hired a general manager or executive in a municipal utility in the Midwest region?
So what was Tom's point earlier regarding that, that looking at some of them already, that no one seemed to have this expertise? Other ones that we, I mean, we talked about the one previously, that were not, that wasn't going to make application. Are those immediately available or any of them that remain immediately available from their past experience? To be in the venue that we're looking for specifically? I mean, that's, I don't know.
What was the question?
Previously, the previous firm, the Meyer.
Yeah.
Not a application this time. Certainly had the area or the, uh, the expertise that we're looking for. Are those remaining who we're looking at now? Because I thought I heard the question earlier posed that Tom asked. Do any of those show that they have the experience or similar work in what specifically we're looking for?
So as, I think I understand what you're asking. So as it specifically relates to these six firms. C biz is a Kansas City based company. And then I would also tell you that we have used Robert Half for at least for multiple execu- executive searches at the executive level, executive director and director level for BPU. So they, they do understand, I believe, the challenges of the relocation. If it's an external candidate for the, the county.
So Cbiz and which one?
Cbiz and
Robert.
Robert Half.
Or half.
Executive search.
And I think as you decide, I would couch it in how you started the conversation with the familiarity with the Midwest. And not because we didn't put a local requirement in there.
Exactly.
That they're not.
Somebody asked me.
Yeah, and then, I mean, when we look at, 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 look at the positions. Polly higher. I mean, we, we see that they have field positions in the, in, uh, utility industry and also Johnson County, Kansas, the Director of Health and Environment. And cities like Birmingham, Jacksonville, Pittsburgh, Water and Sewer Authority. So I mean, we just see a lot of these. So they have some, some familiarity with the Midwest. I would just say that that puts any of them in a pair of me. I just know that the firm. I think there was the one that did the New Braunfels executive, their CEO for New Braunfels Utility. And that was really the only spot on.
Utility.
One that was really close to what we're, what we're looking for. There was a lot of water, a lot of, they, a lot of people had some experience in, in the water side.
The other thing I would say, as you're thinking about this ranking here is that BPU's normal process is that you, you do the criteria and the, what's important prior to receiving the proposals.
That was what I asked in our last meeting, maybe two meetings ago. I said, hey, have we decided what we want?
Well, and we, we did decide what we wanted. It was stated in the RFP that you guys all, that was distributed to all of you prior to us sending it out. But the ranking is, was not done. And we were trying to expedite it, which is why we're, where we're at. You know, we, we got the proposals last Wednesday. We got them out to you all on Friday and then by Monday afternoon, you had an executive summary. Plus I was out of the office on Friday, so.
And I know we, I, I could just probably go through and I could give you my ranking and study.
Yeah, so I think that's kind of where we're at is it's not necessarily the ranking, it's the weighting. Where, where are you? Which one do you want to increase to, to decrease pricing? Or which one do you want to say is, is a thirty-five percent and a five percent and a ten percent to get to your hundred? That's what we're trying to get to.
In past experience, did I hear that from a lot of people?
So is that a, I mean, you can just start changing the numbers. What I would do, change that one to twenty-five percent, Rob. And then the, the end one was twenty-five percent. And then you know that you've got to go down seventeen percent. Pricing was down, so maybe you take it down to ten percent. And then you take the exceptions down to ten percent.
And approach and methodology, twenty percent.
And then the schedule. You know, I think everybody's somewhere around that same, so.
There's only five percent left. That's a hundred percent right there. No, it's a hundred, right? Thought that was the other change.
But what is scheduled for recruitment time might entail? Somebody fill that in. What's the schedule?
I did a week one to week twelve, like intervals of.
How long?
In each of their presentation or proposals that they presented.
The amount of time between signing the contract and landing as a candidate.
And they were all pretty similar. I thought.
Nine is a hundred and twenty days.
But I said that about pricing too. There wasn't that one that wasn't.
Always an outlier.
And I highlighted that in, with my eyeliner, so should have known that.
With the exception of hearing noise that my attorney made over the exceptions category, I'm otherwise, with, with that current distribution, something similar to it.
Good news is I'm not going to be the one who has to deal with it, so.
Usually.
Well, we, I've never been in this process before. We didn't, board didn't do this, people.
You selected the.
We didn't select, I don't think.
We got the, we got the proposals from the different ones. We looked at them and we said, this is what we want.
We just picked them. We didn't use this process. I don't remember.
We didn't have Becky.
Anyone have any tweaks to that for revision?
I believe there was like three, four firms, maybe the, the last time. And I think I still have a listing of those somewhere.
There weren't as many.
Not as many as this. I said, three or four, and then, and then you got it down to, I believe. I believe three, two, yeah, two. Well, you got it down to two and then you interviewed those two and then you selected.
I remember the interviews, but I.
The board want to, to interview all these firms or?
No, 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 absolutely not.
My recommendation, if you want it, is that you not do any interview of the firms because at this point schedule is critical and you're going to slow down the process immensely. So hopefully we've done a good enough job on
Right, right there.
On the RFP and then providing the proposals. And that really is fair to all of them. You know, they all had the same information. They all had the same opportunity. And so that's, yeah, that's, to me, that's fair. If we were doing a two or three million dollar project, then, you know, I make a difference.
Did anybody on the board go through and rank, rank these?
Read through, but I haven't ranked them on those categories.
I haven't ranked, I ranked my categories, but I didn't.
You didn't pick a one, two, three or four?
No, I just picked what I felt like was most important, waiting for consensus or lack thereof.
So my recommendation at this point is that we move on if everybody's satisfied with, because we've got, you know, forty-five minutes to try and get to where we need to be. If everybody's satisfied with the, the weighting there, then we can start looking at the schedule for each of the individual firms and we can just refer to this. Let's see, Cbiz was ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Polly higher was ninety days. Baker Tilly was
A hundred.
Hundred and twenty. Robert Half was ninety days or less. Five months for colleague. And the last one was.
Sixty to ninety.
Twelve weeks. So based on that, you could look at if you're doing a one to five.
So all of them that had one twenty, give them a three and if they got less than ninety, and that's the lowest, or is the time. Then the five, sixty to ninety would be a.
Four?
Yeah, four or five.
And that five months would be a one or two?
Yeah, the five months would be.
That's a tight window.
It's ninety. That was, no, that was five. It's the same as, it's just the same as Robert Half. Just to be, it's, just to be clear, the higher the number, the better.
Right, okay.
So recruit marks, how many days?
They were at twelve weeks.
It's ninety days, isn't it? And it's Polly higher. It's a hundred and twenty days, so they should be. Polly higher was a hundred and twenty. I thought it was Baker Tilly was a hundred and twenty. There was, Baker Tilly was one hundred to one twenty.
Twelve weeks is eighty-four days. Did my mental math wrong?
So I think the discrepancy is that some of them are days and some of them are months and weeks. So. Yes.
Eighty-four. So I mean, recruit marks is the best on that then?
Yes. And Robert Half.
Yeah, so Paul higher would be four, wouldn't it?
Polly higher would be.
That'd be eighty some days, right?
Well, I had Polly hires a hundred and twenty days.
Or ninety days.
Yeah, so they'd be same. I'm sorry, Robert. It'd be same. It'd be five to.
Hey, we ready to move on? Everybody happy with that?
Works for me.
So pricing, I tried to put in here where it was, if it was based on this projected salary that I tried to normalize that, so. So Cbiz was seventy-five thousand. And then they had a separate seven fifty per month. So I think you have to bump that up. So say it's, and they had said how many days?
And even one twenty, so up to four months.
So one fifty-three thousand, so seventy-eight thousand. Then Polly higher, what did they have?
Not to exceed a hundred thousand, but midpoint was seventy.
Baker Tilly was the thirty-two, three forty.
On Polly higher, they had a not to exceed for additional expenses too.
Ten thousand.
Right, additional ten thousand, so.
Really?
But that was.
The seventy K Becky is a minimum.
That's for the professional services fee, right?
Yeah, so.
So, but they had it based on twenty percent of the first year estimated cash compensation. Or seventy thousand mini, minimum. So, so the seventy thousand is based, if you do the twenty percent of the three forty, then you get the seventy thousand.
Correct, but that's a, that's a.
Yes, but.
So if you hire somebody for more than that, it's going to be greater.
Yeah, if they were, yeah, if they were using two hundred thousand as the, as the base pay and it's base pay plus benefits, plus, 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 plus.
And the median is three hundred and sixty.
Oh, I thought it was three forty. Okay, so three sixty, so. My error. So where I, so. I want to do math.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two thousand, okay.
For Polly higher?
Yes.
A dark, is it more accurate? How do we deal with the two not to exceed numbers? Is it more accurate to say it's not to exceed a one-ten?
So we did follow up with Polly higher on their pricing because the way we had it set was that we also asked for the not to exceed so that we could, you know, kind of gauge what kind of upside we had. So it just depends on what, if it's based on the, the salary, then you can go all the way up to whatever that number is. That's why, that's why I'm saying we really should normalize or standardize based on the salary, if that's how they quoted it. Now the Baker Tilly, it was flat rate, doesn't matter what.
So in the case of Polly higher, the only reason it would hit a hundred thousand is if we did a five hundred thousand dollar compensation package. There's not another factor just hanging out there where we're expecting a seventy-two thousand dollar bill and we're going to get an eighty-six thousand dollar. Okay, that's all.
And Robert Half was twenty-five percent of target cash compensation.
About ninety thousand plus. Plus the expense, plus the expenses.
Expenses.
Plus the five thousand, so.
Five thousand.
Yeah. No, no, not plus expenses, it's just nine.
Thousand, the administrative fees flat.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they require a retainer.
But most of them do.
I thought most of them did have.
Yeah, most of them do, and I didn't put that in, in here because. It's pretty standard, so, um, let's see. Um, colleague was ninety thousand. And then recruit marks was.
Thirty-eight.
That was a lot.
Plus a thousand dollars for shortlisted.
Well, they got their thirty-eight estimating a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar salary.
Yeah, which is way low.
Yep, so if it was, I don't wanna do math.
I, I would note in there is it's.
Sixty thousand.
I would probably think that if, if they're, if they're gonna, if they're estimating the salary of a general manager that low, they haven't done any business. In the utility sector, then we could probably disregard them.
Yeah, in New York, man, well, you can't really, not disregard.
Seventy-two thousand.
What, seventy-two is? Uh, twenty percent of three hundred and sixty thousand dollar compensation.
Plus a thousand dollars for shortlisted, so I'd say seventy-three or seventy-five thousand.
And we're definitely listing at three sixty.
We're just using that to normalize or to try and get everybody to the same, so we can evaluate, so.
So did I hear you incorrectly that three forty is the midpoint?
No, three sixty is the midpoint.
Three sixty is the midpoint. So then in recruit marks, in your summary, it's, so based on a three hundred and forty thousand annual salary, price would be eighty-five thousand plus a thousand per shortlist.
That was my mistake. So it should be three hundred and sixty thousand for the annual salary is what we're using as the basis for everybody. Not three forty, I thought it was three forty.
And the eighty-five is really seventy-two?
What did you just?
The, the original note says, based on three hundred and forty thousand dollar annual salary, price would be eighty-five thousand plus one thousand per shortlisted candidate. But as we read it, the math on three sixty, we got, it would be seventy-two thousand plus a thousand dollars, right? I just wanna make sure we're. I wasn't missing something that gave us that eighty-five thousand?
No, that.
It may have been my math.
Okay. Because what we have now makes sense to me.
So we have spreadsheets, twenty percent.
The.
Of three sixty, right?
Seventy-two, yes, so my original.
I think it was twenty-five percent was the map on initial one.
Which was wrong. So now, if you're doing that, I don't know what you wanna use for. I'm pretty sure you can go Baker Tilly as a five there.
Yeah.
Beyond that, it's up to you guys.
I mean, the difference is substantial enough that I think I wouldn't put a four if it were me. I'd go from five to three since Baker Tilly is basically a third or a half of most of the others.
Three on all the rest of them?
Three or a two, I guess, or a one.
Maybe the two.
I mean, I might put a three on the, you know, ones in the seventy thousands and a two on the ones in the ninety thousands if it were just me. I didn't mean to do that unilaterally though, so shout out other ideas here.
What's that number on the Robert Half one? That a two or a three?
On which one?
On Robert Half, a two.
It's a two? Sorry, I'm blind.
That's okay.
Wait a minute, I'll just have to scroll.
Hey. This is where the rubber hits. So we're moving right along, though, that's the good news. So on, um, let's see, the next one is approach and methodology. So we're gonna have to look at our books, page forty-four for approach and methodology for. Cbiz. And they've basically got four phases. Firm's responsibility, search committee responsibility, and then the deliverables. Spout to the load the road.
Well, I, I just don't think you're gonna see a big difference, I wouldn't.
Right, I mean, there's a considerable difference in this across all of them.
No, there was, there was a couple that also talked about stakeholder engagement. Besides just, most of them, all, all, all of them are gonna interview the board members, what we, what we wanted. Some of them were gonna include stakeholders. Uh, and some didn't, did not include that in their deal, whether they would or wouldn't, talk about stakeholders. And, and some were, were gonna, there was testing that, uh, some psychological testing that some of them said that they were gonna, gonna perform. Need that for the board members.
Yeah, I agree.
I think, I think the question that Dennis asked earlier, there's not really a lot of difference here other than the nuances that. Tom just spoke to, but, but the approach is gonna be pretty much.
So the other thing I would say is that a lot of. You can, why you, you disagree, but a lot of, um. A lot of who they're gonna bring to you all is who they've got in their network. And so you're really looking for somebody that has those connections for some firm that can.
And it, and it appeared to me that Baker Tilly was the largest, by far the largest organization or company. Had the most contacts nationally and internationally. And probably had the largest databases, probably by far.
Do you wanna rank them higher than others because of that?
I would say that they would be ranked higher than some of.
Did they have any, um, and I just don't recall, I recall that one of them at least had that, hey, we're not recycling our contacts. Right, we're not recycling what we have from our database, and that was Cbiz, and either of them didn't say that.
No.
I don't think so, I don't remember.
To me, they're like, hey, we're gonna do an original search for those. Yeah. That's rated higher than.
Who was that?
Cbiz.
Cbiz?
So I'm, I'm hearing possible a slight up mark for Cbiz and maybe one for Baker Tilly as well.
I, I can go to that.
I, I mean, I, I get the rationale behind both of those.
I understand it too, I'm.
And I didn't, I mean, again, this is not my expertise, but I didn't read anything that made any of the rest of them pop or sync.
Are you thinking of the rest of them, you like it threes, fours?
More than two. Uh, I like, uh, Baker Tilly as well because they also included that their consultants should also include their approach to diversity, equity, inclusion in their recruitment process.
So Cbiz said, they had something in there, I did try and note that in there. Um, those said Polly Hire had a commitment. Baker Tilly.
I was looking for that, and I thought it was mentioned everywhere.
Except, everybody, I think, except for colleague. Oh, well. They do post to retarget the most qualified and most diverse candidates, so. Um, it might have been recruit marks that really didn't have diversity focus.
So what do you guys wanna do with the strategies? Three?
I'd say three.
Three.
Yeah.
If recruit marks didn't say anything about diversity.
Maybe drop them down, one or two or.
Drop them.
Eliminate. Um, I don't have a problem with downgrading them on that.
Just leave it at a two.
And what's the next criteria, past experience?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rose, what you brought up before, Cbiz, uh, particular regional knowledge is gonna be bumped up for me on that one.
And again, Baker Tilly, just because of the size and the, and the number of recruitments and placements, they had, they said like seventeen hundred, uh. Seventeen hundred, uh, re- recruitments in the last ten years or whatever it was, so.
I know several of them listed relevant.
Is seventeen hundred recruitments means seventeen hundred placements? I mean, I really don't know.
I think, I, I took it as place.
It says successful recruitment.
And did Baker Tilly have, does Cbiz put their close rate? I don't know what the national average is or industry.
For that.
But Cbiz offered it, I mean, they're offering us forty-eight days.
And the other.
I don't know the industry average.
Oh.
The other thing about, uh, Baker Tilly, when you talk about local, the managing director or the director of this project lives in Overland Park.
And then the only other, uh, thing that I would consider would be with Robert Half. They've done a number of recruitments for us, so I would give them, uh, some kudos for that, for that.
That makes sense to me as well.
So a five or a four or what, on half?
Give them a four.
Four? Everybody okay with a four?
Yeah, with that.
All right. That's three more.
Are there others, is there anything anyone saw that would make any of those?
Well, probably, like I mentioned, you probably are, they, they done some, like I said, they done some, some, uh, placements in Johnson County. And it's, uh. Water utility there. And, uh, there's a lot of work. Birmingham as well, we've been, uh, Fayetteville. And, uh. I'll give my three of these.
A three?
Maybe, did they have the list for them on, like, recent placements irrelevant? Provisions?
Maybe all of them.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's, I was looking at the top, have it up there, I'm sorry. Page sixty-three.
Sixty-four.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think Baker Tilly was the one that did do the, the, uh, executive director, uh, New Braunfels Utility, which is comparable to our utility.
And they had Lawrence, Kansas, Independence, Missouri.
Right, in our region.
Jumped out to me, pretty close by.
Why'd you say that?
So rankings for colleague and recruit marks.
I, I, in recruit marks, I didn't see that they had any, any, thing in a utility field, any of their placements, any.
Over than a three? Be careful.
I would go lower than a three.
Two, everybody satisfied with the two?
Sure.
I'm okay with that.
Of that.
That is recruit mark?
Yep, so that leaves colleague.
Recruit marks second now.
Anything with colleagues except that apart from recruit marks?
I don't think so.
I was looking for relevant examples.
Oh, I think it was on page one seventy, one seventy-one.
Thank you.
Mark, recruit marks down, it's got university, then if Polly has university, then it would still be a recruit.
Good.
It depends how many categories we think that covers, I guess. That was part of the factor on, uh, methodology. I guess they just list a handful of recent successful replace, placements. There are utilities on one seventy-one, but it's a short list and we don't, for, for which one? For colleague.
Colleague.
But.
Colleague is based in New York and California, so when they say. Regional utility agency, you don't know if that's right, and also one of their offices are regional to, so.
I think I'd lean slightly closer to two than three, but I don't feel that strongly about it.
Anybody disagree with it too?
All right. So now it's exceptions taken, Cbiz took no exceptions.
Yeah, they get a five and colleague gets a five because neither one of those, uh, check, or offered any exceptions.
The only thing with Polly Hi- Hire is that they don't have the insurance that we asked for, which was five million. So I don't know if that makes them. Not as. Attractive. They, I think they said they go get it. Are they the ones that said they go?
Somebody said they were willing to discuss.
Oh, yeah, willing to discuss if awarded.
Assuming that means they have insurance at a smaller amount than five million?
Yep, they've got, they said they had three million for CGL and two million for professional liability.
We need five million?
So.
We need five million?
We asked.
I mean, the requirements are what they are.
No, no, I'm asking, is that a requirement?
We asked for that.
That's, that's, okay, that's what I'm asking, so why do we ask for five million?
Because they could, if someone's claimed that their civil rights were violated, for example, and sued. Or that they were not treated fairly, or that they were dropped out and not passed on to the BPU, there could be. A sub, that would be a substantial number because it would be salary based and damages, or if they're, somehow they were, um.
They bring a candidate to us that's, yes, doesn't have the qualifications and they haven't done the research on the candidate. We end up hiring that candidate and then we later find out that they're, they're not really qualified to do the job, then.
Right.
Or someone's, that's professional, that's where the professional liability would.
Someone's reputation gets damaged, there could be, there could be all kinds of damages.
Up to five million now?
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's, that's not a lot of money.
I mean, truly, it's not.
Damages.
Well, in that case, do we give Cbiz the sole five? We look at a, I don't know how to weight the insurance versus the other lack of exceptions. Do we still give colleague like a four and then?
Should get where they all are.
Oh, thanks.
We, sorry, okay?
Derail that.
Baker Tilly, let's see. They took exception to some of the selected sections. Require the ability to propose additional terms and negotiate mutual acceptable provisions prior to execute. It was interesting, the sections that they took exception. It was interesting, the sections that they took exception to.
That's a good word, interesting.
Yeah.
They're meaty, what they took exception to.
What?
The, the sections that they took exception to are meaty.
Yeah. So. But some of it could be that they, like, non-disclosure proprietary information. We don't know what they really took exception to. You may not understand Kansas Open Records Act and that type of thing, so, but we could talk, talk through that with them, so. Robert Half.
Aren't they the one that deals with the government exclusively or almost exclusively? Yes. I mean, so they should understand open rest.
Yeah, but I'm.
Yeah, that's true.
I was just saying that there are some exceptions. There are some things that they take issue with that we don't really know what they are.
I, I read this. I mean, I, and again, those are, these are they're significant, what they're taking exceptions to, the, the actual substance of their sections. I don't know what they're. I know.
Why?
Right.
So, and then on Robert Half, they were the ones that had the list of nineteen clarifications and exceptions that were provided by their legal group. But then they did go on to say that they would sign our agreement, so. And then see colleague was no exceptions and recruit marks was they did not include anything, so I think they have to be compensated for that because they didn't have any. Yeah, they didn't respond to it, so I think that makes it hard.
So Cbis and colleague a five? Is that right?
Yes. They had no problems.
And recruit marks a one?
Zero.
Or is it really zero? Do you want a zero?
I do.
Works for me.
Okay.
Or higher problem with the insurance, right?
All right, so Robert Half.
They would get it. Said before, they said they'd get it. I would say they discussed it.
Discuss.
Could potentially mean a higher fee in order to get it?
Hmm, I don't think so.
I mean, it's a cost they're gonna incur if they don't have it now and they have to up their liability, assuming they.
Pass that along?
At least like to.
I think it's something.
Okay. What about a three, middle of the road then?
That's where I am.
With Robert Half?
That was Robert Half, I'm sorry.
That was with someone Polly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were on Robert Half.
I think with the remaining three, I struggle to rank, to rank them against each other here.
Colleague, I mean, we just talked about this insurance issue with Poly Hire and colleague has said the same thing. I mean, it may not be exceptions, but they're telling us they don't meet the requirements, right? And so they'll, they say they'll increase their, and I guess we have to take them to the word? I don't know.
Yeah. He's a much freer than I guess.
Running down rate colleague, is that what you're saying?
I, I think they should be downgraded somewhat.
Colleague, no.
On the insurance piece?
Colleague wasn't on the insurance. They didn't take any exception.
Yeah.
He says that they don't, they don't meet the, they do not currently meet the, the requirements. Says that they will increase.
Oh, sorry. It's not me requirements, yes.
Okay, so what are they gonna be?
I'd say three, two, if they're the same as Poly Hire.
Okay.
Works.
And Baker Tilly, he's interested in.
Baker Tilly's the one that did not say, Robert Half's the one who said, okay, if we're awarded it, we'll meet, we'll just sign it, right?
Yes.
Baker Tilly did not say that.
Yeah.
So Robert Half, she'd get a four. That works for me. That's me personally. You know, that makes sense, Steve.
Yeah, it does.
I mean, I give him a two for that.
Yeah.
So Rob, can you slide your totals? Can you hide your column H at this point?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you go ahead and close out column F?
Yeah.
All right. Last but not least, related to my personnel. Well.
Yeah, again, Baker Tilly, I think they got the most, they had, they had the list of people that they had dedicated or were gonna dedicate to our project was, was by far the most, the most personnel. Us, the managing director, director was gonna be from Overland Park, so he has a local, the local tie. So I'm.
I think that's strong. I do keep in the back of my head that they're only charging thirty-something thousand dollars for this, so it does make me wonder how much of each of those people's time are we gonna get? But the over, the local director, I think, is a really strong piece for me for them too.
Yeah.
Plus they're big, so I think they can spread those costs.
Sure.
Out, maybe.
Some economies of scale, maybe.
That's right.
And I, I, you know, the thing is, they wouldn't be getting all the business that they're getting and all the contracts that they're getting if they're weren't doing it.
Oh, that's so sure. Yeah, I, I think they write high on that for me too. I just wanted to have that small caveat of can have fifty people working on the project, you know, one hour a week and that may not be more valuable than someone who lists four who are.
So on Cbis, Rohan is local.
The other two on the team are showing as a local, who are they?
Well, and, and Cbis is also, in another division, works with us as well.
Right.
And Robert Half is the same way. They have experience with B P U.
Officer Higher.
I'm good. Hope you enjoy these as well.
Who is gonna be working?
In sixty-one, I think it's.
Did you say Baker Tilly's person lived in Overland Park?
Yeah.
How come they listed a Chicago address for both?
No, that's the direct, the, this guy.
Dan Lewis is listed as a managing director, so I thought that's what I heard you say, so I.
This guy. Project Director of the other term. He was the.
Stuff your cap, proud sky. Yeah, it's that Art Davis.
And the consultant.
Yeah, he's the Overland Park guy. Which personally I like a local person because it takes some of the work. If, when you get to the point of having to bring your candidates here, if they are willing to be here, a local travel is cheaper than a national travel and otherwise it's Dennis, Abby and somebody better running the show, more falls to them. He can leverage the. He might, for what it's worth.
Since Rohan is local on Cbis, could we score them as high as?
All their people.
Right, right. I, I would.
How many people do they have?
A five, basically, on this area. That's what I would choose. If you wanna disagree with me, that's fine, but that's what I think.
No, I mean, I, I obviously agree with that.
Also, keep in mind, we do a lot of interviews for people using Team or Zoom, so they don't necessarily have to fly them in to incur all that cost, you know? If it gets down to, there's one or two people that is generally in the same ballpark, we need to help face to face and introduce them, and that'll be a consideration of that one.
Yeah, that's my, that's me. Thank you. Then I can get back into work too, so. Okay, so, um, Poly Hire?
Yeah. Part of your local. I think some, you know, some people, they brought it up earlier that, you know, like New York and California, what do they really know about what's going on here? And they have to see. I'd get, I wouldn't give any, any of the others.
A higher score?
Higher, yeah. About two or three. Maybe Robert Half because they.
Yeah, Robert Half has some experience with us and if you're a can.
When you look at.
Consideration.
Right.
They're absolutely local, but they have the experience, maybe it's a little bit less.
But obvi, and obviously they've got this stat that where they, because they've worked with us before, that can, could get the job, could get the job done.
They're very good. As many of you.
Do you wanna give Robert Half a four?
I think, yeah, that counts extra for me.
He's got a four.
Oh, it's already.
Robert Half.
Oh, the high values are time listed and you guys can tell me what to change.
I'm good. I'm okay with that.
Right, we're coming down to it. So do you wanna unleave H hidden, but scroll back over and?
What do you think? Try to comment. Okay.
I, I'd like to leave H hidden for the moment and then just make sure that you guys are all okay with the rankings. There's anything that you wanna revisit? Otherwise, it's drum roll and unhide column H.
Yeah.
We'll see how it stacks up.
Let's not go to a commercial. Drag it out of you.
Right, so.
Cbis.
Cbis. Number one.
Baker Tilly.
Two, very close.
The, the way that I had, I, that's, I had them ranked one, two, but just the opposite. I had Baker Tilly. I had Baker Tilly one and Cbis two. A real, but they're real close. I don't reason not, the Baker Tilly, because of their size and things that they, the, the things that they can offer us that some of the others, smaller firms don't or can't, which is like the, the, they had some of these psychometric testing and, and analyses.
So I think the main difference between them on our scores is on the exceptions, because Cbis had zero, right? And Baker Tilly had a laundry list and said, we'll talk about it. I don't know this process, so I'm, I'm asking. We had mentioned on the exceptions that one thing, if, if you choose a firm that's got more of them, have a backup, see where the negotiations go, but be able to pivot quickly.
So, so given the size that, that Tom keeps referring to of Baker Tilly. Um, and I am somebody who negotiates with cities every day of my life. Okay? Um. They may put forth a good effort to, you know, be reasonable about it, but they're a big company.
Yeah, they don't have to.
They don't have to.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing I worry about is getting, honestly, getting swallowed up by the size. So they may be doing placements of, you know, executives that are in the multimillion dollar range salaries. Um, and I, and we may get swallowed up by that, right? Like, I mean, ours is important, but how that goes. So I mean, I, that concerns.
I think, I guess, like, when, when it was mentioned earlier, we don't know rationale for the exceptions. I think we should go back, find out.
So the reality is, I think you've got two good firms here.
I agree.
And.
Local was high on my.
Yeah, so, um, we can have a conversation with Baker Tilly about what kind of exceptions they're gonna take, but where you've got Cbis that is ranked higher. I would, my honest opinion is, is let's see if we can get to an agreement with Cbis. And then if that doesn't work, then we can have that conversation with Baker Tilly. Because otherwise, if you say, well, you really want Baker Tilly, then this, this process, you've undermined this process that we spent an hour and a half trying to get to. That's just my, my personal opinion and it, based on my experience of.
And I would second it.
And there's, but the Baker Tilly and Cbis are so close that it just, but if you went back and said, well, maybe we, maybe we need to adjust your, adjust their it could completely flip it.
Absolutely. And what I also would tell you is that everybody had the same opportunity. They were all responding to the same R F Ps, so, you know, the fact that they took the exceptions. You know, and they've done this before for other municipal utility type organizations. We're not the first ones to have standard terms and conditions and our terms and conditions aren't that different than its other organizations. They're not unrealistic or, you know, there's nothing in there that's, um. I mean, obviously, we're trying to protect B P with stress with that, but.
Do we need a, a motion, an official action here?
So I would suggest that, even though we normally don't do that in work session, and I would ask the board to consider what authority you wanna give staff. If we don't, if we feel like we've hit the wall with Cbis, do you want us to come back to you? Um, if we feel like we have an acceptable standard style B P U contract, do you wanna give bill authority to execute that so things can move along? Or do you want that to come back to the board? So that could all be in the motion, like how you want us to proceed.
I say proceed, just, I don't, I don't want it to come back to me unless they reject our offer.
I'm comfortable with either firm. I mean, I think they both came out very strong on that, so if it's a matter of, you know, Cbis is at the top and for some unknown reason, we hit a wall. Personally, I don't have a problem since we had two that were so high above. If, if for some reason we hit a wall with both, I think maybe that would be a point I'd want. Cause there's quite the drop off after those two.
I agree.
Agreed. Pricing is not important, but just, can we revisit again as between the two? I know that that's low on our priorities, but as between the two, are they similar? I mean, in terms of what.
Half, one was half, the other.
Yeah.
Baker was half, uh, what had Cbis was.
So Cbis was seventy-eight thousand.
Okay.
And Baker was thirty-two and change, thirty-two thousand.
Wasn't that based on the one seventy-five?
No, no. Yeah. High, yeah. Lot of, yeah, a couple of guys, a couple of board members were really high on, on local. And I'm very the opposite.
That's mine.
Especially since Cbis has done business with us before.
It's not like they're not gonna conduct a national search. I mean, they're gonna conduct a national search, which is, I thought, what you guys wanted. I mean, otherwise, we could have just had H R do this. Who's gonna, who, I'm not gonna say it.
And you will have the opportunity to have that discussion with Cbis. Even though we've outlined what the scope of work is. You can, you know, there's probably some tweaks in there. If, if we move forward with Cbis, then you have that opportunity to have that discussion with them.
But what do we have to settle in the next minute?
So just, just a motion.
It's very late, I mean.
The, the motion.
Yes, the motion approving your choice of what, if this is what you want, I'm not trying to decide for you, but approving your choice of one and two and authorizing staff to negotiate and enter into a contract with one, and if that is not possible based on our standard terms, then move to two. But no further.
And if two, we can't get to where we need to get to with two, then bring that back to the board.
Yeah, and I don't think that, I think if you just authorize one and two, then we would have to bring three back.
Right, but I just wanted to make them understand that that's.
Yeah.
You need one of us to state that in more eloquent terms than so moved.
You could adopt. You could adopt what's my motion, let's see. The proposed motion would be that the board accept their one and two from, um, the scoring. And that would be, one would be Cbiz, two would be Baker Tilly. Staff would be directed to, um, try and negotiate and enter into a contract with Cbiz. If that was not, if they were not able to, based on not being able to get sort of standard BPU conditions, not varying too far from that. Then staff is authorized to move to the second choice. And with the general manager having the authority to sign either of those contracts.
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Greneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Waits.
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Readjourn. Roll call please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Greneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Waits.
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
You're promoted.
You want to stay in?
All right.